Hold on. Welcome to the December Agenda Meeting. Pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10-4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the Home News Tribune, the Asbury Park Press, the Board Office, the schools, and on Cablevision Channel 118 and Verizon FiOS Channel 24, and by filing such notice with the Township Clerk. This meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, December 14th. The Board will take formal action on payment of bills and other agenda items. Mr. Merritt?
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. The Old Bridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to record public Board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that that act of recording does not interfere with the business of this public Board meeting. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual and in no manner represents the official record of this Board. The Board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Ms. Burns?
Here.
Ms. Callie?
Here.
Mr. De Prima?
Here.
Mr. Dunn?
Here.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Here.
Mr. Giordano?
Here.
Mr. Solakowski?
Mr. Solakowski couldn't make it tonight?
Mr. Weber?
Here.
Mr. Carroll?
Here.
Quorum exists.
Thank you. And now can everyone stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So... It looks like next week we will have a memoriam. We will be standing for a moment of silence. We have a Code of Ethics corner. Do I have anyone that would like to read the Code of Ethics next week?
I'll read it, Madam President.
Mr. Dunn. Okay. All right. And the approval of minutes. So hopefully everyone will have a chance to go over the minutes between now and next week. Does anyone have any questions on them right now? No? Okay. And next week we'll have the report of the student representative to the Board. And we will have recognition next week. Okay. And superintendent's report. Obviously you'll have one next week. Do you have anything tonight, Mr. Sedino?
Just a moment if I may just do clear up some misconceptions or misinformation that was presented to the public through social media sites last week. There was some social media outlets out there that were... People from the community were intentionally or unintentionally spreading misinformation or untruths that did not exist, that some preemptive plan or notification went out to the staff, that we were already planning to go to a district-wide, all remote after the holidays. You know, it's untruth. It's not truthful. It's ignorant if you don't follow and pay attention to the information that's out there. There is no cause or allowance right now within superintendent's authority to remove away from the... No remote learning. There's only in-person learning as allowed by the Governor of New Jersey. There is not a remote option. That has not changed. That has not changed as the pandemic numbers have gone up. What can happen, and the only thing... The only way that it could happen under the authority of the Department of Health is if you had a health emergency within a particular school, which we've seen around the state, the Department of Health could step in like they do for norovirus, mumps, chickenpox, any of those bacterial or viral infections and say you have an outbreak in the school that's causing a health emergency and range anywhere from a week to two-week shutdown for remote learning in that particular school only so that they could get the outbreak under control. That's what we've seen around the state. There has been no districts that have a district-wide shutdown. And there's no reason for that at this point. The big difference between this year and last year, as we're still in a pandemic, we're still having a pandemic that's having equal or similar numbers to last year with our students, is that our staff, which is almost 92% vaccinated, is not having that impact. Last year, we could not safely operate our schools because at this point last year we had 100 staff members or more who were COVID-related absent, meaning they either had COVID or they're quarantined because COVID, in addition to everyone else who might have had the flu or the cold or anything other reason that they'd be absent in the months of December and January. That is not happening this year. As of today's date, we have 10 staff members district-wide, not only in the schools. That could be maintenance, that could be administration, who are positive. We have seven that are quarantined, far different from the triple-digit numbers we had last year. So we have no need for that at this time. We monitor it. Our team is working hard. Our teachers and our staff in our building are doing diligent job of making sure we're following the protocols. And while, yes, the numbers are going up during a respiratory illness season with our students, we are not seeing that level of alarm in the schools. And there is no plan, so I can be clear, in case you want to read between the lines, there is no plan to close the schools because I don't have the authority to do so, nor would I want to do so at this time because our schools are operating as we are directing them to during a pandemic. That is it. End of question. If the Department of Health steps in because there is elevated numbers in one school, we'll deal with it at that time. But those are only temporary closures. Thank you.
Thank you very much for clarifying that, Mr. Sedino. I know that was a rumor that was going around. Okay. And we'll have progress towards goals. And correspondence, there's none tonight. We'll see if there's any... Special committee reports. Will we have any special committee reports next week? No?
Got missed... I'm sorry. Wow, that's loud. Is that better? Is that better?
I may have the correct committee report. If not, I'll definitely have it on January.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. Here... Okay. So now we're at... Right now, we're at the hearing of the residents for agenda items only. If anybody has any questions on any particular item on the agenda, you can come on up and answer your name and the item that you're questioning and/or discussing. And you have five minutes. Okay. Seeing nobody? Okay. I will close at this time, close the hearing of the residents portion on agenda items only portion of the meeting. So now we go to policy. Does anybody have any questions about policy? Any discussion? Has everybody had a chance to go over the policy that was in your packet? Hopefully you have, or you will have by next week. Curriculum, professional development. Questions, concerns? Athletics doesn't look like anything under there at this time. And we do have... Moving on to finance, we do have an action item. I will need a motion to move Finance Number One.
Done. Remove Finance Item Number One, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Can I have a second?
Callie, a second.
Thank you, Ms. Callie. Any discussion on finance? Okay. Roll call, Mr. Merritt?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Carroll, but there are no batch numbers listed on the bill list. Let me just clarify that, please.
Yeah. It's on... I noticed that. It's on the separate action agenda that we have. I don't know if it's on the...
It's not on... It's not on the agenda. Okay. All right. We're good.
Oh, okay. They have it.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolution one passes.
Okay. Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay. And... Okay. Any discussion on the rest of the Finance, two through 10? Turn the page. Okay. Moving on to non-certificated personnel office. One and two. Any discussion? No? There's nothing under non-certificated personnel operational. And we have non-certificated personnel other. Any discussion? Questions, concerns? One through five. Okay. Certificated personnel. We have a motion for... I need a motion for Resolutions One, Two, and Three under certificated personnel.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis Foster. Can I have a second?
Dunn will second.
Mr. Dunn, thank you. Any discussion? Certificated personnel, Resolutions One, Two, and Three.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Can I just say thank you so much to Audrey Baker?
Oh.
Hi. Well, we know... Because we know she really did want to retire sooner, but she just stepped up and got us through this, so...
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. It's... We can't keep her longer, right? It's just not gonna happen. Yeah. She was amazing as helping us through the COVID crisis. And sorry to see her go, but happy that she is going to enjoy her retirement. Finally. Okay.
Mr. Carroll, there's one administrative correction.
Okay.
Just on number three, which we're voting on tonight, the effective date is actually December 13th. There's no date on the motion, but it should be December 13th.
Oh, okay. That's number three?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion? One, two, and three? Roll call?
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions One, Two, Three, pass.
Okay. And any other discussion on certificated personnel? There's a lot of them here. Actually, I do. And I don't know if this is Dr. Ho... Dr. Hooper. So I see we're gonna be doing the before and after care again for like for enrichment and helping with the gap. And it seems like this is a... Is this longer than last year? It looks like it goes all the way from January to May or is it February to May?
It's also inclusive of elementary, middle, and high school, but we are starting earlier than we did last year. I... The date that we started last year, I think we started in possibly in March.
All right. Great. Thank you. I think... Yeah. I think it's gonna be, you know, just a big help for everybody, so I'm glad we're able to do it.
Again, we are in person now, as we weren't at that time in January last year. So it allows us to do that and a wider swath of students we'll be serving by going K to 12.
And is it gonna be like... So how are we going to do the enrollment? Is really... Is it kind of like we did last time, going through the tiers and opening it up to those eligible students and then trying to get as many in as we can?
Correct. And it's also going to be based on the number of staff that we have available to staff the program.
I just have one quick question. So are we voting on the program or are the teachers in power and everything gonna be filled in next week?
They're going... We're working on that right now.
Okay.
Any other discussion for certificated personnel? Okay. How about non-certificated personnel transportation? No? Tran... And then transportation? Okay. Supplies, equipment, and services? No? Okay. Miscellaneous? Everybody check the meeting dates?
Yeah. Madam President, I have a question for Joe. Joe, I'm not 100% sure. I contacted Mr. Story. I think I was at the curriculum meeting, but I... Maybe my colleagues could refresh my memory? Kelly, Jill? This... That was the night of we went to Honor Society and we rushed home and got... Do you remember? Was I a... I think I was, Jill.
Yeah. You were. Yeah.
We were amazed that we made it to both. That's it.
Okay. So you were at the curriculum.
So for policy, this is Callie and yeah, Mrs. Ellis Foster was there. I believe Mr. Giordano and Mr. Dunn. And I believe you were also there.
I was there.
Yeah.
I think... Yeah. I was there.
And I was also in the curriculum meeting.
It's an exciting meeting. Okay. All right. So is all that corrected? Good.
Can I just... So Ms. Callie and Ms. Ellis... Kelly Ellis Foster is being added to the policy meeting?
And Mr. Dunn and Mr. Giordano.
And me.
Mr. Giordano's there. And then to the curriculum on the policy? Oh, I'm sorry. Same first names. And curriculum, we're adding Mr. De Prima and personnel is okay.
And Burns in curriculum.
And... And De Carroll was that? Policy and curriculum. Too many of us have the same names. That's the problem. Okay. All right. We got that? We got... Okay. All right. Three, fire drills. Four. And five, six, seven. Any discussion? Okay. None? All right. We have Board Secretary and Board Business. Nothing? All right. Rolling right along. We will now open the meeting up to the hearing of the residents on any agenda item, any... Not any agenda, any... Any school district issue. Slow down. Don't run too fast. No? Okay. All right. Seeing no one? Should I wait? Are you thinking about it? No? Okay. Seeing no one, I will close this portion of the meeting. We're gonna close the hearing of the residents portion of the meeting. Now we move on to old business. Do we have any old business tonight to discuss?
I just wanted to ask that the transportation information would be presented. Will that be presented next meeting? Yes? Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else for old business? Okay. How about new business?
I would just suggest to the Board, and we can have a discussion on how to do it in a future meeting, but seeing that Audrey Baker is retiring, that we find a way to recognize Audrey Baker. Audrey Baker in 2019, just before COVID, was the State School Nurse of the Year, much like we recognized Ms. Coglan last... At our last meeting, is a rare feat out of all the... I think there's over 3,700 schools in the state of New Jersey, but to find someone who represents education and does it so well to be recognized at the state level and reflects upon our community positively. So whether that be a future award or naming of something, I think it's fitting. She has been a true champion of health causes and really truly got us through this pandemic.
Absolutely. I agree.
Madam President, since everybody's talking about Audrey, I was gonna stay there for next week, but when my committee used to have medical services as part of it, Nurse Baker was obviously the liaison between the medical department and the community. She's a genius. She pretty much anticipated and knew what was happening as it was happening, was preparing for it. I forgot the date of my last meeting before the pandemic. I think it was February of '20 or possibly even March of '20. Audrey already knew everything about it and she was prepared for it and it was just an amazing job that she did and we will miss her. If you're watching, Audrey, thank you.
Just so you know, I'm certain Audrey is watching. And over the last year and a half, almost two years now, I... There are days that I speak to her more frequently than my husband. She has done an amazing job and I don't wanna get... We've retired so many people that have... That have been amazing in our district, but I will say again, over the last two years, I've spent a significant amount of time working by her side and she has stepped up and just really, I can't imagine getting through this without her.
Absolutely. The amount of COVID knowledge that just... She just right... Right at the tip of her fingertips, you know? Just was amazing throughout this whole thing. She... She was definitely the go-to person and what she did with contact tracing, what you both did, Dr. Hooper, was amazing. So thank you, Audrey. We'll miss you terribly.
Can we put that recognition on for next week so that it coincides with her retirement? I mean, we're not voting... We didn't vote on this tonight, right? She's not...
Oh, I don't... Can we?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Kelly just pointed out she's actually not retiring until February, so then maybe the February meeting? Okay.
Okay. Any other new business?
Oh, yes. Congratulations to Audrey Baker and Janine R. Sierra for their service to the district. And also everyone, make sure you email your legislators and ask them to vote against renewing Murphy's emergency powers for 2022. And for those of you who have students that are going to Brookdale, I know by the end of the week you have to either submit to the injection or get weekly testing. And they worded it in a funny way where they have... You have to sign a consent form, but consent means you give them permission. So just make sure you add an addendum that you're not agreeing with what they're doing. You're just going along with it. And hopefully we can do that here. Thank you.
Okay. Well, that... Brookdale has nothing to do with our school, so...
Our students go there and it applies to this school too with the testing. Thank you.
Well, okay. We still... Just so the public knows, we have to follow the rules.
Yes.
And we will follow the rules.
Like I said last month, the law says you can't force medical research with undue influence such as banning them from in-person classes. And I have it right here if anyone wants to see it. I've said it again and I'll repeat it because it's the facts and that's the science, so thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other new business?
Yes, I do.
Yes, Mr. Weber?
The final numbers are in for the 20... 20 census and I don't want everybody to get too excited. We've increased our population by 39 people over the last 10 years. And apparently they'll be responsible for opening two new schools. And apparently they'll be responsible for opening two new schools at some point. In any event, the other, the other issue is, I heard that a thing on the radio today about how COVID-19 is progressing in the country of Nigeria. Nigeria has 213 million people, they're a very poor country. I mean, they have a lot of oil and things like that, but it's, they make about $1,800 a year per capita. And they have, 1% of their population has been vaccinated. They've lost slightly less than 3,000 people in deaths. And otherwise they've been operating perfectly normally. Now, I have no answer for that. I just point out the difference between what the vaccinated nations are doing and all of the policies they're following. And I leave it to the public to just chew on it. I mean, it seems amazing, a country of 213 million people. And virtually they have 3,000 deaths. They're not in the World Health Organization either. That's all I have.
Okay. I again just want to advocate that we are not in any way advocating for anyone to not get the vaccine or go against any order that is put down as a board. You know, no, no one board member can make any such statements. So I just want to put it out there to the public that we as a board are not condoning any such thing. So we, you know, as a board, as a school district, as a public school district, we follow the rules, we follow the mandates, we follow the executive orders as they come down. So just want to put that out there. Any other new business?
Is this also like the good order and all that?
We're going to move right to that, Ms. Ellis Foster, yep.
Oh, well, thank you.
How about that?
So as I said, last meeting, this is actually going to be my last meeting. I have a family obligation that I didn't realize, that after six years I will actually miss a, a regular meeting. So I apologize for that. But I did have something really nice that I was going to say in some comments, but I left them home. So I'm going to, I'm going to try to wing it a little bit because I did want to thank everyone for the opportunity to serve over the last six years. And it has been a very interesting six years. If we think about it, we, it's cliche, but we've been through the best of times and worst of times, right? Oh, thank you, I'm not going to cry.
Sure you're not.
Well, maybe. But no, I sincerely do thank everyone because we have done amazing things over the last six years. And I think some of it's been overshadowed about the last two years of just what none of us expected would happen. And, you know, I've done a lot of reflecting and as I get older, I know I found you can't change certain people. People are who they are and how they react is, is different. And we saw that in our community. Over the last two years, people reacted in all kinds of ways. We certainly had a group that their reaction was to, to go to Facebook where we have grown adults insulting other people, putting them down, creating groups that the whole purpose is just to create this divisiveness. Where people make up names because they don't have the courage to stand up and say in public what they want to say. But you can't help those people. People are who they are. And if the way they get through the day is to put other people down so they feel better, that's what they do, you can't help it. But over the last two years, I've seen so much more from this community. Of people getting up every day, our administrators, our staff, our parents, our faculty, overcoming the greatest obstacles we had ever had to deal with. And they got up and they did the hard work. They came up with solutions for issues we never thought we had to deal with. And they didn't complain about it. It was hard work, it still is. It's hard for the faculty, it's hard for the children. This wasn't easy on our kids. But yet they got up every day, they tried their best. And they still do. And we had parents who went above and beyond, not only for their kids, but their neighbors' kids. And that's who we are. So that's what I'm going to focus on and remember. Is the things we do as a community. And you see it over and over. I mean, I could go on with the number of things that we've done together that has been amazing. So even in the last couple of weeks, if you think about some of the things that have been going on in, in the, in the community. You know, thanks to the Bresnik and Silvestri family, we still believe. Thanks to SEPTA, we're still, we are one. So it's those things that we go on and on and we do that make us who we are as a community. And so, you know, before I get on the board, I was part of the community and I tried to make things better. I will do that afterwards. I don't need a seat here to do good things, just like everybody else. So then the one thing I want to make sure we, we, I note is, I personally never did anything on my own. Everything we did, we did together. And we will continue to do that. So I, it's amazing, we see the kids playing their music, we see them singing, we see them performing, competing on the field and in the classroom. That's the important stuff that we're going to, we continue to focus on. And so, you know, I did have this one little saying, it's, it's a couple lines of text. And I saved it on my phone that, to me, really summed up this time period. So I'm going to try to get through that. Because I tried to think of something very witty myself to say that would be very inspirational. And, you know, I couldn't, so I found this. And it's by Howard Zinn, who's a historian and a playwright. So I'm just going to say this. And it's fine print, so bear with me. He said, "To be hopeful in bad times is just not foolishly romantic. It is based on the fact that human history is a history not only of cruelty, but also based on compassion, sacrifice, courage, kindness. What we choose to emphasize in this complex history will determine our lives. If we see only the worst, it destroys our capacity to do something. If we remember those times and places, and there are so many, where people have behaved magnificently, this gives us the courage and the energy to act. And at least the possibility of sending this spinning top of a world in a different direction. And if we do act in however small a way and we don't have, sorry, another picture came up. Hang on, I apologize. All right, and if we do act, however, in a small way, we don't have to wait for some grand utopian future. The future is in infinite successions of presents. And to live now as we think human beings should live in defiance of all that is bad around us is itself a marvelous victory." So, thank you for the honor to serve. I wish you peace, health, and grace.
Kelly, it's been an honor and a privilege to work with you.
Madam President?
Please.
Since this evening is Kelly's last evening. And I just want to sincerely thank Kelly for being a very dear friend of mine. Her contributions to the Board of Education over the last six years have been just immensely important to this district. I can say unequivocally that, you know, she's been the impetus of what we've done over the last six years. I have to say that even though I don't agree with everything that Kelly says and does, you know, we do, we do come from two different political spectrums sometimes, but we never brought that into the fray here. We never argued about a Republican or Democrat. I know she's in the Democratic Party, I'm a Republican. But we found common ground based upon education and the children. And that, and that's what makes this board so unique, is that people from different political spectrums can find avenues to agree. And we found that avenue. And that avenue was the children and the detriment of our community through education. And I'll tell you, I, I've gotten to know Kelly very well over the last seven years, eight years. And, you know, I have the utmost respect for this woman. She is very caring, loving, she's committed, and she has done wonders for our school district. And she will be dearly missed. I know that a few of us also will be leaving. You know, we have the opportunity to have one more meeting next week to say our piece and goodbyes. But I just wanted to share with Kelly and the public what she means to me as a friend and what I believe she meant to us as a district. And her contributions will be here for a very long time. And you should be very proud of what you've done here, Kelly. I'm very proud of you, I'm very blessed to be your friend, and you will continue to be my friend. So thank you from the bottom of my heart for fighting so hard and fighting what's in your heart for the children of this district. You will be missed, my dear friend.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Is anybody else?
Yes. Kelly, I know what it is to serve on the board, I've done it. I know what it is to lose an election, I've done that many times. And I just want to thank you for your service to the community.
Thank you, Mr. Weber, anybody else?
Um, yes, I would just like to add, just because Kelly's term is over, that doesn't mean her service to Old Bridge is over, as we all know. So good luck and I'm glad to see what you'll do in the future, thank you.
Okay.
Hello?
Yes, I'm waiting.
Well, first I had to stop because she said she didn't cry, but she made me cry. So here I go again. I'm not looking at you. I, I could go on for a very long time about, you know, all the wonderful things that you have done on the board. But I would like to say, or I would say, that your shoes are difficult, will be difficult to fill. But I thought about that as you were speaking. And your shoes can't be filled because there is only one Kelly Ellis Foster. I'm proud to have served with you, you taught me so much. I'm proud to be your friend, I know that that obviously will continue. Okay. I, I, okay. Thank you. I'm done.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else?
All righty. Kelly, I'm just going to keep it brief, we talk all the time. So I feel as though the district's always been a better place because of you. And I'm a better person for having served with you. Thank you so much. You are always a light of inspiration and you always talk from your heart. And I, I appreciate you for that. Thank you so much for everything you've done and being a, kind of like a guardian of the students of this district and the staff.
I just wanted to say that I, I came here very ignorant of the work that you guys do. And I appreciate everything that you've done and your voice. And somebody told me not too long ago from a, a parent, you know, you can take my seat, but you can't take my voice. And I, if I know you, I hope that, you know, you use it, thank you.
My turn. I've been, I've been kind of dreading this day for a while now. And I've been trying to think of what, what I can say to my friend. And I, I couldn't, I couldn't find the words, I couldn't, you know, write anything down that made sense. Because I, I'm still, I'm still grappling with the why. But I'm going to, I just wrote down some, some words just to try to prompt me. You know, the one thing that I've always said about Kelly is she's an inspiration. She is, Kelly is like, and I think, I think some of us can agree, Kelly's the voice of reason. Kelly has talked many of us off the ledge when things, you know, got hairy. And things got hairy a pretty lot over the past few years. You know, Kelly's motto is follow the facts, follow the data. And, you know, she helped us, I think, she made us a better team by keeping us focused on facts and data. And, you know, emotions are there, but let's focus on the facts, focus on the data. You know, I knew Kelly before I came on the board, but, you know, I've known, I had, I think I had Alex in, I know I had Alex in first grade CC day. So it's been a while, but I have grown to know the person that Kelly is. And anybody should be so lucky as to know Kelly Ellis Foster and who she is as a person. I am proud to call her my friend now. Over these past few years, I've gained so much amazing respect for the person that you are, Kelly. And just the leader that you are. And as Jill said, you have very, very large shoes to fill. And I hope everyone realizes that. And you will be sorely missed. And you will continue to do good things and you do still have a voice. Even though you won't be sitting up here, you will be here. And I want to say we'll miss you, but we won't miss you because you will be here. And we love you. Thank you for everything that you've done. And I will finish, that's it. Oh, and anybody else have anything?
Just simply, I would like to thank Kelly for her service to the district and community. And we have worked side by side for six years on many important issues, some very difficult, and we've always managed to come to in a positive way. I appreciate all that you've done, I'm also a taxpayer in the town. So I wish you all the best, success in the future, and I expect still to see you back here someday.
Okay. Good. Okay, does anybody have anything else? Do we have executive session?
We do not have executive.
Whoa.
That's our farewell gift to Mrs. Ellis Foster.
Kelly, look at that. Okay, I feel like I don't want to end because it's, all right, who wants to talk? No, okay. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
I will second.
Okay. Vocal, discussion, vocal?
Opposed? Abstentions? You are finished at 8:13?
Thank you all for coming and we'll see you all next week. Oh, just a reminder, next week is 7 o'clock in the auditorium.